Big time, I now call the Monday, April 7th, 2025 Gardner City Council Meeting to order. The clerk will now please call the roll.
Counsel Brooks.
Present.
Counsel Craig Cormier.
Present.
Counsel General Lawrence.
Present.
Counsel Hardern.
Present.
Counsel Heath.
Present.
Counsel Haglen.
Present.
Counsel Kuzinskas.
Present.
Counsel Mack. Counsel Thibault Munoz.
Present.
Counsel Tisoni.
Present.
And President Tyros.
Present. Please rise for the opening prayer and pledge of allegiance.
Almighty God, we thank thee for bringing us together this evening, inspire us to worthy deeds and sound decisions, and direct us toward the attainment of good city government. We pray thee to bless and protect all the people of our city, and to survive and inspire us that we be deliberate, united, and harmony. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcement of open meeting recordings. Any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium, subject to reasonable requirements of the chair as to the number, placement, and operation of equipment used, so as to not interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Any person intending to make such recordings should notify the chair forthwith. All documents, exhibits used, or reference at the meeting must be submitted in duplicate to the chair as become part of the meeting minutes. Is anyone tonight recording the meeting besides staff? No response. Readings of minutes of prior meetings, February 3rd, 2025, regular meeting. Counsel Kuzinskas.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we accept, we waive the reading of the minutes and accept them as presented.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Kuzinskas, second by Counselor Tison to waive the reading of the minutes and accept them as presented. Is there discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion passes. We have no public hearings. There are no communications from the mayor. There are no petitions, applications, communications, et cetera. Report of standing committees. Be there no objection at this time. I would like to take item 11501 and 11508 out of order. Appointments Committee. Item 11501, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Nicholas Summer Hayes to the position of Conservation Commission Member for a term expiring February 13th, 2028. Counsel Haglen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to confirm the measure on the appointment.
Second. Motion made by Counsel Haglen, second by Counsel Heath to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there discussion? Counsel Haglen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the council, we met last week on these appointees. Mr. Summer Hayes is currently serving a temporary appointment on the Conservation Commission. Thus far, he's had a very good experience. I think he's learned a lot. And I think what was great that night was sort of the theme of having a few people actually reach out to the mayor directly about wanting to get more involved in the city. And Mr. Summer Hayes was one of those residents. He brings great experience, I think, from the Army National Guard. He's over, seen some drills at the Watchoza Reservoir, which is a highly regulated area. Similarly, he has experience working under government contracts. And I think he'll be a great addition to the committee. We were all unanimously in favor, and I look forward to supporting this.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion passes. Item 11508, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Emma Chayton to the position of Board of Health Member for the term expiring to February 27th, 2028. Counsel Haglen.
Thank you again. I move to confirm the measure.
Second. Motion made by Counsel Haglen, second by Counsel Heath to confirm the measure. Is there discussion? Counsel Haglen.
Thank you. Similarly, we met on this item and appointee last week. Ms. Chayton also had reached out to the mayor to express her interest in getting involved. It was also, I think, worth noting, of some, of the four, three of them are recent residents to Gardner. So we have some good committed people who are looking to get more involved in the city they're calling home. She does bring, I think, a good new perspective to the Board of Health, and I think it complements the rest of the group nicely. She's previously worked at Haywood Healthcare. Now she works for MGH Brigham as the practice manager of the cancer center there. And she has a really, I think, strong knowledge of where policies meet delivery and accessibility for the public. So again, she brings, I think, a great perspective. She's uniquely qualified. We were unanimously in favor, and I look forward to appointing this appointment. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counsel Brooks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am going to support this. I just want to point out that this is, would be a fourth member of the Board of Health, which concerns me because it leaves an even number on the board. I did talk with the mayor, who indicated he was looking for a fifth member. I think it's important that we have odd numbers on these boards and commissions, so there isn't an issue with tie votes and things like that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Brooks. Is there further discussion? Counsel Heath.
Thank you, President Tyros. Going off what you said right there, he's right, there is a even number. However, any vote, if it's a, you know, if it's an even vote, it's considered a no vote. Until we find a fifth member. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Heath. Is there further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion passes. At this time, I'd like to take a brief recess for the clerk to swear on the new appointees.
I state yea me.
I, Nicholas Summer Hayes.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of Conservation Commission Member.
Perform the duties of Conservation Commission Member.
According to the law and the best of my abilities.
According to the law and the best of my abilities.
We'll now resume our agenda schedule with the Safety Committee. Item 11466, a request from Counselor Karen Hardern to have an informal meeting with the Monarch Uzat Regional Transit Authority, MART, to discuss rider and pedestrian safety and road utilization and ridership. Counsel Craig Cormier.
Thank you, Mr. President. We discussed this item at the last meeting, and we unanimously recommended to approve bringing this to the full council. At this time, I'll defer to Counselor Hardern to present her request.
Counsel Hardern.
Yes, President Tyros. We've seen recently two serious accidents involving MART buses and pedestrians. One in Gardner, resulting in serious injury. Obviously, this is a concern, but I am also concerned about the performance of the MART system in Gardner in general. I have witnessed unsafe driving and have attempted to report this to MART, first as a private citizen and then as a counselor. Any I did, I felt not taken seriously. Furthermore, it has been a growing irritation for me for years. The number of times I see MART buses in the city that are completely empty, or maybe with one or two people, I don't think I've ever seen a bus even half full. This is a concern because people in the city, especially those I represent and work for, could benefit from better service and access to public transportation. I hear these concerns from many of my constituents all the time. It is also important to consider that right now, because of increased funding from the state, that the MART bus is free to ride. At least by my observation, this hasn't seemed to improve ridership at all. They literally cannot give their services away in a community that really needs public transportation. I hope this is looked into, and we can have a productive conversation with MART about ways to improve service in the city and be more responsive. Thank you.
Counsel Craig Cormier.
Make a motion to schedule an informal meeting with MART to discuss the items listed.
Motion made by Counselor Craig Cormier, second by Counselor Hardern to schedule an informal meeting. Is there discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion passes. Item 11478, application for motor vehicle license, class 2, MTM Auto 207 East Broadway. Counsel Cormier.
Thank you, Mr. President. This application was actually filed last year and was unfortunately lost in the shuffle. We did get it back and discuss it at this last meeting. This license is in good, this applicant was in good standing, and we were unanimously in favor. We're recommending the license. In the meantime, we will, as a committee this year, make sure to look through the application process to make it more efficient as we can, to make sure that we don't lose any other applications or have any applicants feel that the city is not working in their best interest on this process. But that said, the committee was unanimously in favor, and I move to approve the application.
Motion made by Counsel Cormier, second by Counsel Hardern to grant license for motor vehicle license, dealer's license, class 2, MTM Auto 207 East Broadway. Is there discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion passes. Finance Committee. Item 11515, a resolution of disapproval in opposition to the proposed building department fee increases. At this time, I would like to call on Counsel Kuzinskas to the chair, so that I may participate in debate in accordance with the rule to the City Council.
Item number 11515, a resolution of disapproval in opposition to the proposed building department fee increases. Is there a motion? Counsel General Lawrence.
I make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel General Lawrence, second by Counsel Heath to adopt the resolution. Is there a discussion on the motion? Counsel General Lawrence.
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance Committee did meet on this item this evening. Counsel President Tyros did present on it. I'm going to hand the floor over to him to recap the discussions, as much of it was his and the mayor's comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel General Lawrence. President Tyros.
Thank you, Counselor Kuzinskas. As a matter of transparency, I'd like to reiterate what I said to the Finance Committee earlier this evening. It'd be fair to ask why I felt it was necessary to propose this resolution, and I understand some people may think it premature. However, I think this is a serious issue. This proposal, put forward and sent to the council by the Building Commissioner, is potentially damaged to the image of Gardner, and as a matter of public record, I feel we need to quickly and decisively reject this before there is any inkling that we are giving it any consideration. Building costs are already expensive. Permitting fees are already expensive, and navigating city bureaucracy can already be burdensome. This proposal would substantially increase those costs and give nothing additional to our residents or businesses in return. So again, I realize this is not the typical way we may do this, but I certainly have no intention of supporting fee increases. Maybe there's an appetite for that. I guess we'll find out soon. In 2022, we raised fees for the first time in 14 years. I thought then, given that the amount of time had passed, it made sense to do so. And at that time, we discussed conducting a review every five years, which puts this proposal at least two years ahead of schedule. I'm deeply concerned about the proposed, the proposed proposal requesting a substantial pay increase submitted shortly after the fee increase proposal. These two proposals, which are included in our packet, seem to be paired together as just a few hours after the fee increase proposal, the Building Commissioner put forward a follow-up proposal to substantially increase his own salary. I do not want any of our constituents to think, not even for one second, that we would consider raising fees to pay for salary increases of that department head. Such a scenario presents a clear conflict of interest. Establishing a link between fees and fines collected by a government entity and the salary of those imposing them is undeniably a bad policy. This has been demonstrated time and time again. Frankly, I'm disappointed that this concept was put into words, let alone presented on City Letterhead. The other reason we should deal with this issue now concerns the credibility of the council. When we last took up this issue, the mayor and the council at the time set his best practice to review every five years, which again, puts this proposal two to three years early. There's a lot of fees increase, fee increases listed here. Far too many to take the time to list tonight. But as examples, this proposal includes a 50% increase to the minimum building permit fee, a 28.5% increase to the fee by square footage for new single-family and two-family permits, it nearly doubles the fee for signs, and triples the fees for fences, just to name a few. Not just being talked about, but written down, submitted to the clerk, and made public record. How do we think our constituents will feel about this happening? When we say we have to increase fees, we say we won't consider it another five years as a matter of best practice, and then the time, energy, effort, and resources are spent on this for no good reason. My hope is that we will preemptively reject this. The mayor earlier at the Finance Committee meeting said that he would not support an increase. So we can send a clear message to the residents and businesses of Gardner that we will not allow them to be squeezed to boost salaries. Thank you.
Thank you, President Tyros. Further discussion? Counsel Thibault Munoz.
Thank you, Madam President. So, I'm sort of leaning toward a no vote on this, and I think the reason for me is that the building department has unionized, right? And there's been a significant increase in salaries across, across the department. And I, personally, when I saw it, I was thinking that this is proactive of the Building Commissioner to say, you know, because we're going to have to, right, as a council and as a city, have to come up with the increase, fee increases, right, for the department, to support the increases in salaries. So, from my understanding, I met with the Building Commissioner on Friday. It's, and it sounds like you've done a little bit more digging, but when I, when I spoke to him, and he was saying it would be amount to, in some cases, only a $5 increase, you know, up to 25, a $5, $25 increase per permit. And you think about, like, the amount of funds it takes to, let's say, redo your kitchen, you know, what is a $25 increase, right? I mean, so, you know, personally, I think that, you know, we're going to have to come up with the funding anyway. This, and it doesn't really generate a whole lot of funds if we increase these, but it does increase, it does create some revenue for that.
Thank you, Counsel. Further discussion? Counsel Heath.
Thank you, Madam, I'm sorry. Counsel, what was it? Yes, it's not pro term today, right? It's not pro term. I apologize. So I'm in favor, and I'll explain why. I don't think increases is what's best for the constituents of Gardner with the rise of costs and needs that we can't control, such as electricity, food, and many more items I can't think of right now. I think we should control what we can control. So, you know, I don't necessarily, you know, agree with increased costs for the constituents. I pay attention to the stock market. Globally, we are potentially entering to what's called a bear market, and you gave me a point of order anytime if you want. So we're entering what's considered a bear market. For those that may not know, that's when there's a 20% drop from the highest point of the market, and, or the highest peak, I'm sorry. That happens when businesses and investors lose confidence in the current direction of econ, economic policies, which leads to recession conversations. With that being said, again, I'm in favor, and I think that this is an item that should be brought back up, like you said, in 2022 and 2027. Times are tough, so I don't believe making it tougher for constituents is the right move. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Further discussion? Counsel Hardern?
Yes. Why do we want to increase fees where there are so many people out there already hurting, just trying to get by? There will be no better services for the people by raising these prices. Do we just want or do we need more money for what? Raises? This is not a good reason in my eyes, so I will be supporting the resolution brought forward by President Tyros. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Further discussion? Counsel Cormier?
Yes, I will support this resolution. As Counselor Tyros so eloquently stated, to put both of these together is a little too closely linked. We have time to deal with these increases. I support that the building department has unionized, and the salary increases are something we have to deal with. I don't know that we need to knee-jerk. Though I do appreciate what Counsel Thibault Munoz said, that it was proactive of them to try and come up with a solution to the issue. I will support this resolution at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Further discussion? Counsel Brooks.
Thank you, Madam President, Acting President. I guess my question is, why are we being asked to take this action? In December 2024, the city settled a new contract with Teamsters Local 170 covering non-department head inspectors in the city's building and health departments. Shortly thereafter, to cover the increased costs, the Building Commissioner proposed an increase in building permit fees. That proposal was addressed to the mayor, and as of today, the mayor has not chosen to forward that request to City Council. I believe the mayor has the prerogative to propose a change or to propose no changes. I feel that we are putting the cart before the horse and acting on a matter that isn't ready for City Council consideration. Furthermore, as the mayor works on balancing the FY '26 budget, he may find that an increase in building permit fees would help close the gap without impacting city staff and services. And so, in my opinion, we should not foreclose that option at this time. I will not be supporting this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel, President Tyros?
Thank you, Counsel Kuzinskas. Sorry for the confusion. I'd like to address a few points that may take me a moment, so I apologize. But to work off that analogy, the cart before the horse. I don't believe we have a horse in this scenario. I believe we have a cart that's just rolling down the hill, and it's our job to jump in front of it and stop it on this one. I, I saw, and was raised my attention, that, you know, the clerk was addressed in this fee proposal, so it did come to the council to answer that question. And as, as a matter of discussing the proposal itself, it's a bad proposal for our constituents. You know, I hope my fellow counselors will join me in voting in favor of the resolution. And I just want to be clear, because it can be confusing. A yes vote to support this resolution is a vote to oppose fee increases. A no vote to this resolution is in opposition of it and would be a vote in support of fee increases. And I also want to be clear that I intend to lead this council through a thorough, fair, and publicly debated consideration of the broader issue of non-union salaries that must be addressed with a complete proposal that's put forward. However, this sort of scheme, I think we just need to reject outright. And some of the other points that were raised, specific to the Building Commissioner's salary, the Building Commissioner would already earn more than his subordinates would. And when you would factor in his analysis of there being a COLA, a cost of living adjustment, to these direct reports, I don't believe his analysis took into effect him himself receiving a COLA. So it was kind of disproportionately elevating his subordinates. And this really comes down to equity as well, because we have a situation where this fee proposal, I believe there is a link to the department head salary increase, where there's a request of 20% for the salary of the Building Commissioner. And when you think about all of our other department heads, what sort of messages that would send across the city, I don't think this council can afford to, nor should it consider any scheme of this nature. Thank you.
Thank you, President Tyros. Further discussion? Counsel Thibault Munoz.
Just to put out, one word, this, this, what you proposed, Counsel Tyros, or President Tyros, is related to fee increases, not necessarily related to the proposed increase in the Commissioner's salary, right? This is what we're talking about.
Is that for?
I mean, I, I'm sorry. Sorry, question to Counsel Tyros.
President Tyros?
Thank you, Counsel Kuzinskas. It is my opinion that these proposals are connected. They were sent just a mere few hours between each other on the same day, and this resolution, to be clear, would be the council making a stance that we will not support fee increases of the building department. And I think a subsequent consequence of that would also be stating our disapproval of raising fees to pay for salaries, salary increases, to be clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel?
Questions?
Counsel? Further discussion? Counsel Haglen?
Thank you very much. I really appreciate everyone's comments tonight. Having been at the Finance Committee meeting earlier this evening, where we talked about this, when I think about this procedurally, I do believe that I agree with President Tyros. A request was made to our clerk, it's in the packet as well, that this be on the Finance Committee agenda. And so I think through his prerogative, you know, the council president decided to address it in this manner, as is his option. And so I think it was worth not ignoring, right? The score request was made, it was out there, it's a matter of public record. And so I think it was right to address it. I don't think we, as a council, should necessarily feel hesitant or afraid to put our express opinions out there, however it might work out tonight, or on any matter that we take up. The budget is right around the corner. There's probably a more appropriate time to address things like this. And so when I think of this resolution, it's really against the current proposed idea from the building department, not even necessarily future actions that might come up. And the mayor was there this evening at our Finance Committee meeting, and he spoke favorably of the resolution, and he had no issue with it going through tonight as well. So thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Counsel Haglen. Further discussion? Counsel General Lawrence?
Thank you, Madam President. Obviously, also at the Finance Committee meeting tonight, do want to, although it's been said already that the mayor did not approve of this, that is why we didn't receive it. However, the clerk did receive it. I did mention during the Finance Committee meeting that it's, the five-year is best practices of reviewing these. 2027 was mentioned by Counsel Heath, the best practice review it again. It doesn't mean we can't review it again earlier. It doesn't mean the mayor himself can not come up with his own proposal in, next week, if he so wishes, and propose it if it's something he approves of. However, this was with us, and action I believe needs to be taken to let, let even the entire city know and department heads know, if you submit something like this and it's with the City Council, we may take action on it proactively, whether the mayor proposes it or not. I will be in support of the resolution, and I thank President Tyros for his work. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Further discussion? Counsel Brooks?
Thank you. I just want to comment on one, one thing that was said, that a yes vote is in opposition to fee increases, and a no vote would be supporting fee increases. And I disagree with the second part of that statement. Because I don't, when I'm voting no, I'm not saying that I'm in favor of increases. I'm voting no because I don't think this is the appropriate way that this issue should be handled. That it could have been done in a different way. And I also feel it's important to leave some room, some wiggle room out there as we go through the budget process, so that if they, if the mayor finds that he needs to do something, he has the ability to do it. So my no vote is not saying I'm in favor of increases, it's just saying I think the option should be left out there at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Further discussion? Counsel, President Tyros?
Just for the final time, Madam Kuzinskas, almost did it. That's Counsel Kuzinskas. I just want to be clear too, because it's important, right? When you read the resolution that was drafted and submitted, it is the council saying that we will oppose building department fee increases, that people are working hard enough right now, fighting hard enough every day to pay for things, simple things, that we shouldn't add any burden to them. And I just want to be clear that this does not prevent, as Counsel General Lawrence said, the mayor next week submitting a proposal. There's no action preventing the mayor from doing anything in this resolution. It is simply a statement by the council saying that we do not support this proposed fee increase. Thank you.
Thank you, President Tyros. Further discussion? Counsel General Lawrence?
I'm going to continue to call you Madam President, just to start off with. With the wiggle room for the mayor, if department heads want to leave that wiggle room, do not send it to an employee of the City Council. If was at the not send it to an employee of the City Council. It was at the clerk's office. Therefore, the council president had it. Discuss it with the mayor and leave the clerk's office out. It was with us, and again, I think appropriate action was taken. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? If there's no objection, I'm going to adjourn to a roll call vote. Thank you. And to be clear, the-- a yes vote on the Resolution of Disapproval in Opposition to the Proposed Building Department Fee Increases would support the Resolution of Disapproval in Opposition. A no vote would not support a Resolution of Disapproval in Opposition. The clerk will please call. Is there any further discussion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Brooks?
No.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Dernawitz?
Yes.
Counselor Hardern?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Haglund?
Yes.
Counselor Kozinski?
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz?
No.
Counselor Tison?
Yes.
President Tyros?
Yes.
That is eight yes and two no. The resolution passes.
Thank you, Counselor Kozinski. Appointments Committee, Item 11474, A Measure Confirming the Mayor's Appointment of Lori Wida to Position of Zoning Board Member for a Term Expiring January 22, 2028. Counselor Heath?
Thank you, President Tyros. The committee met with Ms. Wida. We voted unanimously to recommend. Therefore, I move the appointment to be certified.
Motion made by Counselor Heath, second by Counselor Haglund to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there discussion? Counselor Heath?
Thank you, President Tyros. Ms. Wida is-- I'm sorry, Wida is currently completing her first year as a member of the city zoning board of appeals. She originally appointed-- was appointed when the ordinance was changed from three members to five members. The purpose of this reappointment is to keep a consistent staggering of terms of the zoning board's membership. With that being said, the mayor submitted a reappointment for Ms. Wida early per the city law department. An appointment renewed before its expiration date restarts the appointee's time in the position to the date of the newest appointment. Rather than expiring in 2027, Ms. Wida would have an expiration date of 2028. Ms. Wida also serves on the Board of Appeals with the town of Templeton alongside-- currently serving on the City of Gardner zoning board. She is someone with a wealth of knowledge in land use, policies, and laws. She has played an integral part of the board's success, and that is all.
Thank you, Counselor. Is there further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion passes. Item 11476, A Measure Confirming the Mayor's Appointment of Eric Flint to the Position of Planning Board Member for a Term Expiring January 7, 2028. Counselor Heath?
Thank you, President Tyros. The committee voted unanimously to recommend there, therefore I remove the appointment to be certified.
Motion made by Counselor Heath, second by Counselor Haglund to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there discussion? Counselor Heath?
Again, the committee met with Mr. Flint to discuss his interest in becoming a planning board member. Mr. Flint is a resident of Gardner and is willing to bring a wealth of knowledge to the city of Gardner with years of experience, as he's currently the conservation planner for the city of Worcester, previously conservation agent of the city of Marshfield. And he also worked in the private sector in Denmark. I'll use a full quote from the mayor. His resume shows he's the full package and overqualified. He's calling Gardner his home for him and his family, and he wants to see Gardner succeed. Currently, the planning board is down two members following two resignations, and if appointed, the board would meet the quorum requirements. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors. Is there further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion passes. The council already addressed item 11501 and 11508 this evening. There is no unfinished business in magistrate consideration. There is no new business. Counselor comments and remarks? Counselor Heath?
Thank you, President Tyros. It's April, which is Autism Month, Autism Awareness Month. As I'm wearing a nice tie, I just got it in. So, I just got a little thing that I want to read. Celebrating Autism Awareness Month, now often referred to as Autism Acceptance Month, is a crucial for fostering understanding, promoting acceptance, and advocating for the rights and needs of individuals with autism spectrum disorder, ultimately leading to a more inclusive and supportive society. That is all.
Thank you, Counselor Heath. Is there further counsel comments and remarks? Counselor Kozinski?
Thank you, President Tyros. Earlier this year, President Tyros has, under the new City Council rules, has assigned me as the council liaison for constituent services and community outreach. And so, with that, part of that goal was to make some significant changes to the City Council website. We do have a web page on the City of Gardner website, and so I just wanted to give a couple of updates on that. I have met with our Director of Technology, Bob O'Keefe, and we've gone through the City Council webpage. Some of the updates that have been made are to our staff directory on each of our individual pages. Very easy to find our contact information, and also the Standing Committee pages and information. And there's also-- we're starting with changes and updates, and then we're going to go to additions. And so, I hope to make this more user-friendly for the public, a good resource for the council to be able to refer constituents to. We get a lot of questions that are kind of frequently asked questions, and so it'd be nice to have a place to go to direct them to that information. Director O'Keefe has been incredibly helpful, incredibly efficient in making these changes, and also giving great suggestions on the fastest way to do this with the most efficiency. And also, if anyone is interested in looking at it, I just please be aware there are some ongoing changes, so it's not all completely updated yet. But if you just go to gardner-ma.gov backslash city council, you will reach our page, and so there'll be more news on that to come, but so far, there's been some good updates. And then, just a second update, the Economic and Community Development Committee did meet last week. We kept some items in committee as we asked for a little bit more information from the department. As at our last City Council meeting, there were two items that had been referred from the Finance Committee, had already met, to the Economic and Community Development Committee regarding a new position in the department with the combining of positions. And we'd asked for a little more information, wanted to give some time for them to get it to us before it comes back to the City Council, and Director Stevens was on top of doing that. And so, again, I would always encourage people to watch our meetings, and I do mean that for all Standing Committees, as with the council rule changes. I think anyone paying attention would notice that our agendas look a little bit different as well. There are many items that remain in committee and before they come to the council, so they've been fully vetted, and so we won't have referrals typically. But I would definitely encourage people to just, you know, check out our meetings. And then, our next Echo Dev meeting, we will have an update, our monthly update from the department. And then, just on the Mackey Park-- the Mackey Park project, we did get an update that they are still working on it in terms of getting-- there's some funding that needs to come forward to be able to correct the errors that were made in the park, but it is moving forward, and they're inquiring about it. And so, that basically is the-- is kind of the summation of it. But again, I just wanted to give a quick update since we didn't have anything come here today, but also remind the public to certainly look at the City of Gardner's YouTube page and check out any council commissions or committee meetings. But particularly with the council now, our Standing Committees meet more often, more regularly, just by the way that the structure of the council has-- meetings have been made due to the rule changes, and there's a lot that is done in Standing Committee, and it is time and effort that we spend as city councils on behalf of the people that we represent doing good work in those meetings. So, I just wanted to make a shout out to check out those meetings. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Kozinski, is there further discussion? Counselor comments and remarks? There being none, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn after the closing prayer. Motion made by Counselor Tison, second by Counselor Heath to adjourn. Is-- all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion passes.
Almighty Father, who sees over all, as we adjourn, we thank thee for the opportunity to join in liberation and action within the course of this meeting. Bless the Lord all who are gathered here and the peoples representatives we are, and do thou attend to our common welfare until our next meeting. Amen.
Thank you.